Begin with the pledge of allegiance and an invocation by Commissioner Davy Jones. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Psalms, chapter twenty, verse seven says, "Some, uh, some trust in chariots and some in horses, but we will remember the name of the Lord our God." So, Lord our God, our Father, we invite you to this meeting today and we'd ask for your guidance as we take up the business of the county. We give you thanks today, Father, for the blessings that you send to us, looking out over our citizens and our employees. Father, we give you that thanks. We just have one request. It's been two weeks since we've had rain, so Father, if you could bless us with moisture, we would be highly appreciative. Today, we give you that thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. The chair comment this morning is an appeal to persons to not buy or purchase anything to do with a commercial which celebrates vandalism of throwing rocks at windows. I despise that, and from this chair, I would ask advertisers and others to find something different to advertise rather than committing crimes. Today, I don't have any other comments, and we're ready for the approval of the consent agenda.
You want to make the changes?
We do. Yes, sir.
I move that we, uh, I move that we make the changes to the agenda as requested by you, the administrator on the BFR.
Consulting agreement. Correct. Is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include an item at the end of the agenda for BFR, a report from Robert Reese. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda. Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. This morning, Madam Clerk, did we have anybody contact you for public comment?
Nobody addressed me, no.
All right, I'll still open up the floor. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission this morning in public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the business agenda. The first thing this morning is a proclamation. I will read it and then ask for the approval of the commission to make this proclamation regarding the hundred and fortieth anniversary, anniversary of the official organization of Fannie County, Kansas. It reads as follows. Whereas in the month of October in the year eighteen eighty-four, Fannie County was officially organized, marking the beginning of its proud history as an integral part of the state of Kansas. And whereas, the combined efforts of early pioneers and settlers, including the likes of Charles Buffalo Jones, William D. Fulton, James A. Fulton, and John A. Stevens, transformed the region from an untamed prairie into a thriving community, and their legacy continues to inspire the hard work, innovation, and resilience that define Fannie County today. And whereas Fannie County, named in honor of Lieutenant Governor David W. Fannie, has since its founding embodied the pioneer spirit, resilience, and hard work of its people, growing from its early days as a frontier settlement into a now thriving hub of agriculture, industry, and culture. And whereas, over the past one hundred and forty years, the people of Fannie County have built a diverse, vibrant community where generations have lived, worked, and contributed to the growth and development of the county and the state as a whole. And whereas, Fannie County has played a crucial role in the development of the Great Plains from its roots in cattle ranching and farming to its present-day leadership in agricultural innovation, energy, and community development. And whereas, the two thousand twenty-four year marks the hundred and fortieth anniversary of the official organization of Fannie County, providing an opportunity to honor the rich history of our region, celebrate the progress and achievements of our community, and look forward to a bright future for this community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Fannie County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Fannie County one hundred and fortieth anniversary month throughout the county of Fannie County, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this milestone by reflecting on the past, embracing the present, and envisioning a prosperous future for our community. I have set my seal in hand and caused the official seal of Fannie County to be fixed this day in September twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to make the proclamation commemorating, commemorating the hundred and fortieth anniversary of the official organization of Fannie County. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I'll sign. Sixteenth, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll hear from Bob Kreitzer, Board Member, Western Kansas Career Showcases.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. Number one, to thank you for what you did just a little over a year and a half ago when you committed the money to establish a formal organization of Western Kansas Career Showcases. Last year, we had six showcases. They turned very, very strong. We kind of turned the corner. Last Thursday, we had our first of eight showcases that we're going to have this year, held down in Monizuma at their community center. It was on agriculture and the beef industry, very well attended, had almost two hundred students and sponsors. We had fourteen school districts, and we had sixteen businesses. Several businesses were new and different. We had Bartlett Grain from the grain industry, which was new and different. We have High Plains Ponderosa Dairy, bringing in that segment. We had the National Guard, again, giving an alternative to what these students can see as a potential career. What we were able to do because of your generosity a year ago to get us started, we've been able to build something very special, and we're going to continue to build on it. Our next showcase is actually going to be in Scott City. It will try to draw from that part of our working area, if you will, to try to see what goes on. And we've got some very, very strong community sponsors up there. At Volgmore Land and Cattle, we have Poki Feeders. We're getting new and different people coming from new and different areas from a business perspective to introduce the students of our region. So, we ask you to continue with what you've started. Continue as our key element sponsor and provide us the operating funds so that we can continue on this quest. We look forward to some very special things. It was really interesting, American Implement, who's been kind of one of our founding sponsors and has attended many showcases. The event down at Monizuma, she said, was by far the most awesome presentation. We've learned each and every event that we go, and we would invite you to Scott City or any of the other showcases. And we get to February and April when we have the health care here in February and when we have the one in April on the critical needs for the county and the city. Certainly invite you anywhere, anytime. And as a final thought, we thank you very much for allowing Kelly Munyon to join our board, and she can continue to bring information to you about what we do and how we go about doing business for our area. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Bob, your request for funding this year is at the same level of last year at fifty thousand, correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, Mr. Administrator, the fifty thousand dollar request can come from the general fund?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, it has no budget impact, correct?
See that one more.
It does not have a budget impact?
Well, it is, it does come out of the unclassified general fund, yes, it does.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. That's my question. Uh, the commissioners?
No questions, comments, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important that we support workforce development. We, we hear that all the time from employers that they can't hire enough people. We've found over the years that by developing our own is the best way to solve this problem. Nobody else is going to help us but ourselves. I would move that we fund, uh, I don't know, what's your showcase? That's what I was trying to say. Showcase for next year.
All right. Is your motion that we'll fund Western Kansas Career Showcase at the level of fifty thousand from the general fund?
That's correct.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to make this funding. I don't want to cut off any other opportunities for questions for Mr. Kreitzer prior to the time that we vote. Is there any other questions?
Not, not to Bob, but I do have a comment I want to make before.
Okay.
Not, not specifically to Bob. I didn't know if you wanted to release anything before.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pishney, your comment with regard to the pending motion.
My, my comment is this, Mr. Chairman. I, I will be voting against this motion, not because I don't support the showcases. Matter of fact, I've been to several. I didn't get to the Monizuma one. I support Joe Coles and his efforts in trying to educate young students about what they can do.
I thought I hit it, I thought I had it on. Sorry. I thought I had my microphone on. Sorry about that. Uh, I must have hit it twice. But anyhow, to repeat so that people out in the land can hear too, I will be voting against this, not for lack of support to the showcases, because I believe Joe Coles is doing a great job of helping young students understand what is available out here. And I support the, uh, train them here, retain them here, uh, the philosophy of the showcases. I will be voting against it because I am opposed to the fifty thousand coming out of unclassified general budget, that I think that fifty thousand could be used in other ways for county's essential services. Uh, and I had offered my suggestion during budget time last week for an alternative way to do, uh, to fund it, and so it's with regard to the funding, not a lack of support for the showcases.
Very good. Any other comments before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Motion carries. And direct the administration to get the funds to the showcase. That goes to the administrators, the same methodology of payment as last year. All right, next on our agenda is the Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. Ask for Elisa Charles to come up, and please announce for the viewing public and tell us what you have for us today, please.
Chairman and commissioners, Elisa Charles, Assistant Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. Before you, we have a board appointment. So, Paul Parrott resigned recently from the Board of Zoning Appeals. His term was set to expire on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So, the following citizens in no particular order have expressed interest in serving with the Fannie County Board of Zoning Appeals. That is Clemencia Zermino and Ivan Gutierrez. I have attached the applications for reference. Your alternatives this morning are the governing body may appoint Clemencia Zermino, the governing body may appoint Ivan Gutierrez, or the governing body may leave the vacancy. Staff recommends appointing Clemencia Zermino or Ivan Gutierrez to fill the vacancy.
Questions for Ms. Charles?
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion, I would move that we appoint Ivan Gutierrez.
I'll second that motion. Been moved and seconded to appoint Ivan Gutierrez to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to echo what I have said for some years about these appointments. I'm not opposed to, to either person being appointed. I am opposed to having to go to City Hall to apply for a county job, and I still think that that ought to be done here, and Alicia doesn't agree with me, but that's okay. We can still be friends. I just, uh, we in the, in the county government, as a county commissioner, have no idea that this opening was there, and I could have found you a handful of folks interested if I would have simply known, but that's all taking place over at City Hall. So, that's my, uh, my objection.
When we did get the vacancy, we did send it to the county administrator, and Dory, the county clerk, did post it on the county's website as well.
I'm not a web sitter. I'm old folk, old folks, you know, where you like to just be told. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Pishney.
Mr. Chairman, and Alicia, and this goes to you and our administrator and clerk and everybody in the county. I, with regard to another issue going on in our community, a person said to me, "We need to err in over-communicating, not under-communicating." And I think that's a part of what Dave is saying. Every means of communication, whether it's from your office at NDS, whether it's from the county, needs to be used on these. So, I ju- just a, an endorsement for over-communicating, using alternative means than Facebook and so forth, and websites. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded to make the appointment according to the motion. My comment here is, is that, Alicia, we thank you for all the hard work that you do, and we thank you for the notice to the clerk and to the administrator. And as chair, I will ask that in the future, that when the clerk and the, and the administrator get notice of a vacancy, that that immediately goes to the Board of County Commissioners prior to the time that the packets are sent out, so that we can have that notice as requested by Commissioner Davy Jones. We will then vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the parcel plat, and we'll hear from Mr. Thompson. Please announce for the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Dante Thompson, Planner with Neighborhood and Development, in Palmberg Land Service and Services, is requesting the plat, the Lightner Second Edition. The property is generally located at eleven four eighty Beef Land Road, Fannie County, Kansas, and contains approximately fifteen point six eight acres. The property is currently zoned A agricultural district and meets the non-conforming parcel exception, since the lot is more than five acres and contains excess, uh, excuse me, agricultural buildings that existed prior to two thousand and six, according to section four point zero two zero eleven of the Fannie County zoning regulations. The language of this section is listed within the memo. The second submittal was presented for review on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and met requirements. There are two alternatives in front of you. The board, excuse me, the governing body may approve the parcel plat, or two, the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And the planning commission recommended approval of the plat at the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, and staff recommends approval of the parcel plat. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, this is, uh, more than five acres, correct?
Yes.
Fifteen.
Correct.
It meets all of the criteria, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, it not only meets criteria, to me, it excels on our criteria. What better place out in the county to, to develop a residential area than in a corner where there's a pivot irrigation system? And, uh, so this is, when you're ready, I'll offer a motion.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
And there's continuous forty acres with it, same ownership.
Very good. Any other comments? Commissioner Jones, your motion, sir?
I'll offer the motion to approve the partial plat as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the parcel plat as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Josh Erthiaga, Budget and Grant Analyst.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Josh Erthiaga, Budget Analyst for the Police Department. The letter of declination, the grant was awarded and accepted in September of twenty twenty for the purpose of emergency communication equipment upgrades and the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and nine dollars. This decision is due to our staff structure. The previous budget analyst was promoted to the Service and Finance Department within the city of Garden City, and the new budget analyst, myself, now assumes the position. For the two thousand nineteen grant, an interlocal agreement was presented to Fannie County to show that the city of Garden City will be handling the funds. There was no interlocal agreement for this twenty twenty grant, and in order to decline these funds, signatures from the chairman for Fannie County and the city mayor are required. I apologize for not having the complete memo, but alternative is to, the governing body may approve the letter and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of declination as presented, or they, or the governing body may deny the letter of declination as permitted. Recommendation is alternative one, approve the letter of declination as presented and authorize chairman to sign the presented letter. And do you have any questions?
I haven't seen the letter.
It was in the pack, yeah, it was in the packet. I, I, and I.
So, I missed it.
And I certainly, I certainly don't have a problem with offering the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, uh, you're offering a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter of declination dated nine September twenty twenty-four?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the signature of the chair to the declaration of the award granted in the amount of twelve thousand five oh nine zero zero as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Next on our agenda is Hutton Construction Contract, Andy Farmire from Hutton. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andy Farmire with Hutton Corporation. What we have in the packet before you is our proposed contract for the EMS project. There's essentially four documents that comprise that contract, which is a AIA one thirty-three, an A two oh one, and then, and then two exhibits to the one thirty-three.
Well, if you would, uh, from your perspective, what's the price on this building?
We actually just received updated drawings, about fifty percent complete drawings last week, and we're in the process of doing a, a budget update right now. It looks from kind of a initial review that we're very much staying within the design that we, we budgeted last time, so we feel confident that we're, um, we're going to be able to stay within that budget. But we're, we're in, actually diving deep into that right now. October eighth is a planned page turn meeting with Goldberg Architects and the county to, to look sheet by sheet at those fifty percent drawings and review them with staff and departments, and we plan to have our, our fifty percent budget ready at that meeting.
Mr. Administrator, do we have a not-to-exceed amount on this contract?
We do not. Uh, sorry, can I, I'll field that question if that's okay?
No, it is a percentage of what the anticipated cost is.
Yeah.
Very good.
So, there will be an amendment to this contract that comes at the completion of design after we bid it out, and we'll set a guaranteed maximum price via an amendment at a later date.
Questions for Hutton Construction?
Mr. Chairman, and my questions are, are to the administrator and council. I, I presume that administrator and council have been through the documents and, and don't see any red or, red or yellow flags within the document?
We have been through it and had sent back some requests of changes, which have been made, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve this document with the requested changes council has suggested.
Authorizing the chair to sign?
Correct.
And I would second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the documents attached A one thirty-three with exhibits B and C and, uh, contract form AIA A one oh two dash two zero one seven. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Lana. Next, we'll hear from Lana Devol, President and CEO of the Economic Development Corp.
Good morning, gentlemen. You have on your agenda this morning two tax abatement requests and then a, a report from our office. So we'll start with tax abatement requests. And I think you started with American Implement, is that correct, Dory? Is that the, okay. So, American Implement is building a new training center adjacent to their existing building location. And they anticipate it's gonna be a little over three million for that investment. And they did request a tax abatement for that. It falls within the Garden City USD 457 School District. So Dr. Mike Dominguez, as well as Drew Tone from USD 457, were present for our tax abatement committee meeting on that. Typically, so long as it pays back within seven, eight years, the taxing entities have, have just offered kind of a blanket approval. However, we had a lot of new folks to review these, so we felt it was important to have the Tax Abatement Review Committee anyway. So in your memorandum from the committee, you see the payback periods. For you, Finy County, your payback based on the other benefits of this investment is 1.9 years. For 457, it's 1.3 years, and for Garden City Community College, 2.7 years. While we're on the topic of Garden City Community College, there were questions about whether or not this training facility conflicts with the current John Deere training program that is at Garden City Community College. It does not. This is a training facility for existing employees from throughout the entire region. So it will not change their John Deere tech program that currently exists at Garden City Community College. Typically, you would enter into a memorandum of understanding with the applicant, in this case, American Implement. In the past, we've always written those memorandums and had them for you at this time, but you have legal counsel who can do that for you. So if, you know, if she opts to write that, I can certainly send her the examples of what you've signed in the past. But basically, it's just an, an agreement that you intend to honor that tax abatement so long as they build the facility as they've suggested they will. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
Lana, if, if they repurpose the building since it's located right next to the dealership, do they lose their abatement?
You would have to write that in to the agreement if you wanted to have a clawback provision of that, of that nature.
I'm just curious because, you know, it's, it would be. It appears to me, I don't, you know, I don't know, but it appears to me that if they, this doesn't work out the way they envisioned it, that they could use it for storage or whatever.
Yeah, that didn't come up in front of the committee, but you could certainly include it in anything that you, that you want to sign with them.
Valid argument. I'd ask the other commissioners.
No, I think that's valid.
Lana, would you define for the viewing public what the actual abatement is on this project?
This one is, I'm sorry, I didn't print these documents, so I have to go back and look through them. This one is a 20%, is what they qualify for. Your term is a 10-year term for all tax abatements. And it is based on their capital investment is what qualifies them at the 20% abatement level. That is the lowest abatement level we offer, and then we go up to a 60% abatement.
Any other questions, sir?
Question, Lana. You said that this doesn't affect the program at the college. But how do the two fit together? If they're doing training there and training at the college, is there, can you explain a little bit what's?
I can. The Garden City Community College program is for technicians, so that is the folks who actually work on the equipment, either in the dealership or in the field, as the case may be, where this program that they're putting in place out at their location is again designed for existing employees. So it might be continuing education on, you know, various technical pieces of it, or it could be sales training, could be HR training, could be any number of, of things that they utilize. But that is for their existing employee base, where the Garden City Community College program is designed for folks who haven't yet begun work but are sponsored in through a John Deere dealership.
Commissioner Dreese?
I might be speaking a little out of a turn, but I have watched this building go up. I'm out there in the repair shop quite. My understanding is they've been sending their employees a couple at a time to Wichita for training. And there's a lot of technical, this AI stuff has made these, this equipment. They're not turning wrenches as much as they're messing with computers anymore. So that, that has a lot to do with this program and what Mr. Coster is trying to accomplish.
Any other comments? Motion to approve the EDX tax abatement request for American Implement, 20% for 10 years on this project, subject to an agreement drafted by council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that motion. Do we want to also include the, the concern Larry had about the repurpose of?
I don't, you know, I don't want to muddy up the situation if it, if it's gonna slow them down or do anything, let's, I'll drop that.
Then I'll leave my motion to be as stated, to, to approve the EDX, EDX tax abatement request.
Right, but it's gonna be subject to memorandum of understanding, correct?
Yeah.
Very good. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the EDX tax abatement, 20% for 10 years, subject to a memorandum of understanding to be executed by the parties. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I like Commissioner Larry's suggestion that, that it be used for its intended purpose. And I don't know how we state that in the memo of understanding, MOU, but I think that needs to be considered as our council is drafting that.
Well, why don't we require it?
Well, I don't, I'm not quite sure of the wording, but, but that principle, that idea, that thought, I think needs to be incorporated.
I think our job today is to approve the EDX and get the memorandum out to the taxpayer to see if the memorandum's gonna be sufficient for them.
I agree.
Present motion will suffice, I believe. Note, note that I'll be abstaining, but I think I have the luxury because of the need for this project in our community. Any other discussion? Been moved and seconded to approve the EDX, 20% for 10 years, subject to a memorandum of understanding. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? I will abstain. Please note that in the memorandum, span of clerk. Madam President, please continue with the EDX tax abatement for Garden City Co-op.
Absolutely. So this is for the shuttle loader facility located out just west of Holcomb. So the, this is USD 363 that is impacted by this one. Dr. Myers was not able to attend the abatement committee meeting in person, but, but did weigh in through one of his board members, Dr. Ruda. So in this case, the Finy County abatement will be repaid in 5.6 years, USD 363 in 3.5 years, and Garden City Community College in 6.2 years. I will mention that these abatement percentages are run against the capital investment that they're making. That is what your policy states, is that it will be based on the capital investment. Because we don't know what these will actually appraise for when they're completed, that's the number we use in that initial cost benefit analysis that we review. Ultimately, when the project is built, the appraiser goes back out and actually assigns a value. We've ever had one where the value came out as much as what they had invested in capital. That's for pretty clear reasons. Machinery and equipment is not taxed, those types of things. So, so while this shows those years for the payback on them, just know that once it's built, it, it will not appraise as high as the capital investment that they've made in the project. So those year, those years of payback are still within. Again, the seven years that the committee often looks to. But it, it does look a little larger than it, than it likely will actually be once it's taxed.
Questions for Mr. Wong?
Is this, oh, this is 60, 60% abatement?
It is a 60% abatement, yes. That's the, that's the highest category you have.
Mr. Chairman, and mine is a follow-up question. The rationale for 60% abatement on this one versus 20 on the other?
Capital investment, yeah. They've invested over 30 million in this facility versus the 3 million that you had invested on the American Implement building.
Mr. Chairman, in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Co-op and former chairman of that board, so I probably should abstain.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the tax abatement as recommended by the Tax Abatement Committee?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the tax abatement for the Co-op subject to a memorandum of understanding? Mr. Movement, Vice Chairman? Memorandum of understanding required?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Very good. 60% for 10 years, subject to the MOU? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Don't go very far. Update for Finy County Economic Development?
Thank you, and I will mention that the committee during discussion on these two abatement applications talked about whether there was a need to update our existing tax abatement policy. The last time we changed anything in that policy was 2013, and you all adopted it at that time. So I have made some recommendations for some potential changes that we could make to the policy, largely to keep up with the valuation, the capital investment required to qualify for the various abatement levels. You already have one of the more conservative tax abatement policies in those that I have compared to other growing communities throughout the state. So I'm not sure that you want to change the percentages of abatement, but certainly to keep up with inflation, we should be raising the level of the, the capital investment they have to make in order to qualify for those. So that will likely be coming back to you. I've not heard any responses yet. I did send the, the policy options to the entire committee. So we'll regroup as a committee and go through those and, and hopefully be bringing you guys an updated policy for approval, hopefully within the next few months. Dory, I do have the presentation on here if you guys want it. Otherwise, I have printed copies. All right, you have a presentation coming around to you. Instead of just talking about what we're doing on the monthly basis, which we normally talk about with you, I thought, since you had just finished budgeting period, it might be a good time to go back and reevaluate once again valuation and kind of a tax analysis, if you will. So, started with kind of a review. This is, no, understand this is a presentation that we'll be doing to community organizations and others who, who ask about mill levies and, and the valuation of homes and those types of things within the community, which, as you guys are well aware, is a pretty common question that we all get. So the first few slides are, are gonna be pretty elementary for you all, but not necessarily for community members who may be looking at it. So, as you know, the budgeting process, you determine how much you need to deliver effective and efficient service. You determine the amount necessary to maintain the county-owned properties, account for inflationary costs, and take a note of that. We'll come back to that here in a little bit. And then you divide, divide the assessed valuation by 1,000 to determine the value of a mill, and then the total budget needed divided by the mill to determine your mill levy. You're all pretty well aware of that. And then when we look at calculating what individuals are paying in taxes, on a residential home, we, we take the market value of that home, times our assessment valuation, which is 11.5 for residential. And then to determine how much each person pays, we take the mill levy times that assessed valuation. So the things that matter when we're talking about people's taxes as individuals are the market value of their home and the mill levy that you all have established, right? So when we look at inflation, I mean, this, this chart is just the, the US inflation rates from 2017 to 2024. And things have changed. None of us, none of us are surprised by that. I think it is encouraging to see that that rate is coming back down, and I think there's a good chance that we're gonna hear an interest rate reduction from the Fed as a result of that. But I think it's really important for people to recognize, not only have their personal budgets been impacted by those inflation rates, their governing bodies have had been inflected by those inflation rates as well. The next chart is standard inflation versus housing inflation. So the, the blue line is standard inflation. That's what you could expect to have applied to durable goods, to groceries, all of those things. Housing inflation, however, is also impacted by supply and demand, much more than other durable goods are. So you see that housing inflation has, has been on track, higher than standard inflation over the last couple of years. This is the US rate. I will tell you, we went back and analyzed some properties here in Finy County, residential properties. Probably over half of our residents in the county have actually increased faster than the national inflation rate. So when you have those questions from folks saying, "How come my house went up another 20,000 this year?" Bear in mind, we are likely ahead of, of the US rate for housing inflation. That's just based on supply and demand. That's, that's driving that. So then if we look at a 2,000, a $200,000 house, and we pick 200,000 because that's kind of the standard that everybody works off of. When we talk about taxes, we talk about what impact does it have on somebody who owns a $200,000 house, right? So if you bought a $200,000 house in 2011, it is likely based, valued now at at least 292,000. Again, in Finy County, it may even be higher than that. But that is a 46% increase over those 13 years. And then, interestingly, I, I threw in this next chart just because we got to talking about it in the office. How much have other things gone up? So a Ford F-150, you guys are pretty familiar with the Ford F-150s. You even buy some for your county operations, right? And had it, the, the MSRP for 2011 was a $15,300, which is kind of laughable at this point, right? Had it just gone with standard inflation, today's price would be $20,755. Larry, can you buy a Ford F-150 for $20,755 brand new today?
No, but that's why I'm still driving my vehicle.
Exactly, exactly. In actuality, that MSRP has now gone up to 47,627. So I throw this slide in there to remind people that, yes, your housing value has gone up, but your house is still an asset. It doesn't depreciate. And that next slide really shows that. So if, if in 2011 you bought a $200,000 house and that 2011 Ford F-150, that was your, your net worth analysis, assuming you had no debt, right? When you look at 2023, if you still own the same Ford truck and the same house, it looks like housing is still your better investment. So, just, just kind of interesting to, to look at that from a couple of different standpoints.
You might point out too, sometimes people think about the inflation rates going down. That doesn't necessarily mean that the prices are going down. That just means it's not rising as fast as it was.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, you know, it's, this is a free market economy, and they will charge what people are willing to pay. So I don't see a whole bunch of holdover Fords on the lots. So apparently, people are willing to pay that price, so.
Theresa keeps them in business.
Oh, okay.
I do. The green light is on.
All right, so this next slide then, this, and I'm doing this presentation to the city tomorrow, so you'll see city and county slides included in this. But this is city property tax collections, actual versus inflation adjusted. So again, if we were applying inflation to how much you're collecting in taxes to pay for government services, the city right now, their actual. for government services, the city right now, their actual collections are 35% below inflation. On the county, it's 42% below inflation. So if we're talking about being able to provide the same level of service that people had in 2011 in $2023, you probably are not in a position to do that without cutting other things. It's kind of the point of that, right? So for people who say government should be limited, and I shouldn't have to pay taxes, if you want the services that come with taxation, just know that you're expecting way more for way less value of the dollar out of your governing bodies right now. And then the thing that everybody always likes to look at, some comparisons. So this next slide is comparables from three Western Kansas communities that most would argue are very similar. We all have a city, we all have a county, we all have a community college, we all have school districts, so should be very similar in nature. Liberal has gone up 14%. This is the past 12 years of valuation. Liberal has gone up 14%. Great Bend has gone up 33%. Dodge City, 48%, for an average of 32% of our peer communities. Garden City, in that same period of time, has gone up 69.9%. This means that the value of Garden City grew at 2.16x faster than the average comparable Western Kansas City, and that's important. When we get to the next chart, you can see this is correcting for growth. So if we say that the average is 32%, and we outperformed that, how much of that is related to efforts related to economic development? Either FCEDC or efforts that are undertaken by the city themselves or the county itself. So in the very bottom there, you see that 45.9%, we're saying that much of the growth is attributable to inflation, to just being located where we are, to having a community college, to having an economic development office, okay? That 54.1%, you can equate to the efforts that we've made differently than they did in those other cities. So when we go to the next chart, the next slide, we can see that for us, for the city of Garden City, the 12-year growth was 114.7 million, which is an increase in collections at their current mill rate of over $4 million. And the portion of that that can be attributed back to the economic development offers would be 62 million. And in taxable collections, that's almost 2.4 million to the city of Garden City, based on the efforts that have been taken by economic development. And then when we look at the counties, Seward County was actually down 3.4% over that 12-year period. Barton, up 19.7. Ford, up 42.1, for an average of 19.5. Fannie County was up 87.2. Now, I'll note on this, for Fannie County, you are only looking at real property valuation. You all know your actual valuation is 615 million, not the 486 million. However, as we tell you often, where we can have an impact is in your real property valuation. We don't have a lot of impact on personal property, or oil and gas, or state-assessed utilities, so we take those out of the factor. If we left those in, it would be an even greater disparity, but we only worry about real property valuation. So in the county's case, the Fannie County's value grew 4.47x faster than the peer counties. And then when we run the same exercise on it, 22.3% of all the growth can be attributed to inflation, location, the state, community college, having an ECODEVO. 77% goes back to the efforts around economic development. So when you look at that, that would be an $11 million increase in tax collections, and the portion attributed to us would be 8 million of that. Other things that folks ask about that I think are important, especially when looking at the county, that next slide goes into how much land area do you have to worry about? Because we know that a lot of county dollars are spent on roads, and that the size of the county will matter, so that does show you, Fannie is the largest of the four counties we looked at. Ford follows about 300 square miles less. Barton is about another 200 less than that, and then Seward is the smallest with 639 square miles. And then population comparisons, again, Fannie is the largest. And the next slide just puts those populations, the trends, if you will. So you all know that we've had a lot of questions. You asked some questions at your last meeting about the disparity in population estimates and growth opportunities. You know, your justice planners' growth shows a much different trajectory than what we're hearing from, as you pointed out, the school district's consultants on that. And I would tell you that we've already created the jobs. You know that. You've heard us say many times, there's well over 3,000 jobs open in Fannie County right now. We have more people working than at any time in our history. We still have less than 3% unemployment, which is considered less, actually. It's more than full employment from an economist's standpoint. So the number one thing that's going to change our population is housing. That's where we're at. We know that we are about 4,000 housing units short today. That number goes up every year as we don't meet the construction needs to get us caught up. So the things that are going to affect housing development are going to be land availability, interest rates, and developer interest. So, you know, when you talk about how are we going to accomplish the growth that we need and that we're poised for over the next five to 10 years, it all comes down to housing. And I think that, you know, your question about how was there such a difference in the numbers and in those estimates, that's really the biggest difference. The, you know, the consultant working for the school district while we met with them, we talked with them about the jobs that exist and the need for housing, they simply did not take that full job demand into account. Justice planners did take those full numbers into account, so that's the difference in how that looks. And then quickly, we'll just finish this up. So mill levy scenarios, what would have happened if you met inflation, and what would have happened if we hadn't increased valuation? So this green line is your actual mill levy. The yellow line is what you should have been taxing to meet up with inflation over the last 12 years. And the red line is what would have happened if we hadn't had the valuation increase that we've had. So had we just lost the oil and gas valuation and not replaced it with real property valuation, that red line is the picture of what your mill levy would look like. What difference would that make to that person who has a $200,000 home? Right now, a $200,000 home is paying $1,089 in their county portion of taxes. Had you met inflation, they would be paying $1,296 in their county portion. And had we not had valuation increases like we have had, they would be paying $1,0381 for that same $200,000 house. So happy to answer any questions you may have on that. Again, know that we will be doing this presentation out in the public with civic organizations and different groups that ask us to come and speak, but I thought since you just finished budget, you might want to see how you're performing there, too.
I'd like to point out, Lana, to the viewing public, our valuations have increased, and they're, you could be shocked without making this decision. Your efforts have brought commercial and industrial properties, and that's the big jump you're talking about, not necessarily your home valuation.
That is correct. That is correct, sir.
That's a very big point that all these industries that come to our community.
Yes. The other thing we don't include in this, and I didn't, simply because I didn't want to be Shannon up here and talking numbers at you for hours, but we didn't do a sales tax analysis as a portion of this, and as you are well aware, sales tax collections have been a big part of being able to offset some of the mill levy growth. In the city of Garden City, I can just tell you that in comparing their, the taxes on a $200,000 house, they have not exceeded $900. They have stayed between $830 and $900 on a $200,000 house since 2011, which is pretty insane. They've been able to hold that flat because of sales tax collections that are offsetting, as we've said multiple times, offsetting the need for increased property tax. So for those who question, does it really work to utilize sales tax? It really works to utilize sales tax, and it really works to attract additional sales tax collectors to the market.
Other questions, comments? My comment is, on the slide with regard to Western Kansas comparable county valuations, your presentation reports that we have 615,815,432 here in Fannie County. I would like to point out to the viewing public, however, that the useful taxation market value for the county is 595. And in fact, our useful valuation for purposes of collections was down 500,000 in 2024. But I don't want to leave it with that connotation. What's your outlook for valuation growth in 2025 with the things that are in construction now and will probably go on the rolls 1-1 of 2025?
Yes, so first thing I would comment to that, we use the same comparison for the other counties as well. So they do have RHIDs. In some cases, they have TIF districts. So we use the same valuation number, so it is still an accurate reflection of the growth within the four communities, number one. Number two, I can't answer that for you, Commissioner. I have requested those reports so that I can include those in this, what we have out in TIFs, what we have in RHIDs, but I don't have those yet, so I can't really speak to that. We do know we have some tax abatements coming off within the next couple of years, excuse me, but we also know that we've exceeded, far exceeded, the benefit ratio with those tax abatements that we did. Again, I just can't give you those numbers because I don't have the most current numbers from the taxation standpoint. So once I have those, I'm happy to provide you guys that report as well.
That would be helpful, and I think the public should understand that the difference between the valuation that's useful for the county for budgeting purposes and the market valuation shows the incredible investment that is being made by the public in economic development, and we can see by these charts and graphs how well that helps hold the taxes on the $200,000 house, as well as provide incentives for growth in our community. I think the wonderful part about your presentation is, is that, as Zig Ziglar used to say, "All arrows point up."
Yes, I think it's safe to say that we have set a pretty good trend for continued growth, and certainly housing is our greatest opportunity and our greatest limiter at this point. So just, everybody you talk to, remind them we need more housing. I would also, because I have for the last several reports talked to you about our work with higher education, so I would like to take a moment, if you would allow me, to introduce Jessica Byrd to you from Newman University. And Jessica has done a lot of the work in bringing additional degree opportunities to the community, and I think it would be valuable for you to hear the results of some of those efforts.
Jessica? Please announce yourself for the viewing public. Some of us remember when you were assistant principal in our school system.
Yeah, we had a few phone calls. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me a few minutes to be here this morning. My name is Jessica Byrd, and I'm the Associate Vice President of Outreach Education through Newman University. Our main campus is located in Wichita, Kansas, but I've been a proud resident of Garden City for 26 years and get to remain out here to do the work for Newman. We started a Southwest Kansas initiative a couple of years ago in partnership with the Fannie County Economic Development folks. They helped provide us some very important data that highlighted that Garden City and the surrounding area is what we would call a higher education desert, meaning a four-year opportunity is not within 120 miles, and thus leading to brain drain. And so to help solve part of that problem, we worked with them, Fannie County Economic Development folks, and then we also wrote a couple of grants, and we were awarded 2.1 million for the Rural Post-Secondary Education and Development Grant, and 1.1 million for congressional spending dollars, thanks to Senator Moran and his team. With those grants, we're able to, we were able to expand our programming. We've had teacher education in Southwest Kansas since the 90s, when St. Mary's of the Plains closed, out of Dodge City. And so we were able to expand programming and hire new positions. So I was able to bring on four new people, all in Garden City, and we expanded to business. We offer business, RN to BSN, so nursing, and then agribusiness, which officially changed its name last week, to ag-tech management, to more, to have a better reflection on what actually that programming's going to do, which is focus on smart agriculture and technology for this region. With that 1.1 million we received in congressional spending dollars, we are purchasing a mobile, smart ag lab that will get to travel all over Southwest Kansas and serve this region well. Our numbers, so we started business in the fall of '23 before we had any grant money. We just took a leap of faith, and we had six students join that cohort. All six are returning for their final year this year, and so, but we've added to that. We have a total of 60 students in Southwest Kansas. 30 of those are in Garden City. So 50% of that is right here locally. Seven of them, seven of the 60, didn't attend one of the three community colleges, Garden City, Dodge City, or Liberal. They came from other places, but we honored our scholarship because they're serving Southwest Kansas in their role, so whether they're business or agribusiness. And so we did a scholarship program for business, ag-tech management, and nursing, where if they get their associate's degree from their local community college, Garden City, Dodge City, or Liberal, we give them $20,000, and then we do a Pell match. So anything that they're eligible for in federal Pell will match it up to the $7,500, making it about $750 for somebody to be able to go to school for a year. And then for education, we didn't do the Pell match because there are other funding opportunities for education majors in this region, one of those being the Federal Teach Grant and the other being the Kansas Teacher Service Scholarship. And so we didn't apply the Pell match to that group, but I would welcome any questions you might have.
Commissioners? If not, I would like to thank you, Jessica Byrd, for your investment of your career in our community, assisting people to get their bachelor's degrees and more, not just in education, but in the other areas now that you are expanding, and would ask for you to continue assisting students and providing educational opportunities in Southwest Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave a packet for you to study for later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time for a break, sir. All right, so.
Mr. Fisher? Just a showcase, I'd like to point out that Newman University had five people at the showcase in Monizuma, very, very active with the students.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a recess until 9:45, and we'll call to order at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Session, we're in our business agenda. The next item up is the Fannie County Law Library, not Law Library, Fannie County Library expense. And before us is a bills that were presented during the last session. And at this point, I'll defer to county councillor if you had a chance to review our contract with the Fannie County Library.
She is, she is kind of like.
I am shocked. I don't think it wants me to talk, so. I did send out a memo on this one, if you all had a chance to read it. We have one contract regarding maintenance with L S S I. It provides for routine building maintenance. I don't know that this hiring, it, within the contract, it contemplates actual costs associated with what it's going to be as being the contract price for this. It also includes lawn care, snow removal, et cetera. I don't, the contract probably needs some updating, as I stated in my memo to the board. I don't know that these necessarily fall within that contract paying for these, but I believe the, the board can take whatever action it wants on those at this point.
Mr. Jones?
Well, I have several things to say, Mr. Chairman. You want to turn on your clock?
Okay. Be glad to.
How much time do I have? How about ten? The, the library was built, I don't know how many years ago, but it was a county library. And L S and I, L S and S now is known, was not part of the equation. And the employees over there were county employees and the county took care of the bills. And then about eighteen years ago, is that correct Pam? Something like that, a contract was entered into with, with then L S S I for the management of the library. And I asked Pam to be here today because in, in their funding from the county, they turned right around and sent about, what, Pam, could we ask you to come to the, to the stand there and identify yourself? Then I have a couple of questions for you to address.
I'm Pam Tuller. I am the director at the Fannie County Public Library.
Now, how much of an expense do you send back to the county for maintenance and for upkeep and for cleaning services?
We spend three thousand nine hundred dollars every month and then a small amount for janitorial supplies.
And a hundred dollars or a couple of dollars a month. My, my question is, as I said, as an ex officio board member, Mr. Chairman, we, the HVAC system is a real good example. The county picked that up, didn't ask L S and S to do that at all. They've had some projects like front doors that they, they did some funding efforts in order to get new front doors on. And also some, use some dedicated funding for the, the signboard down in front. But when, most recently, sewer drain tubes that run from the ceiling or from the roof down through the walls and to the outside develop leaks. And, and again, the county helped pick up those expenses. The library's insurance picked up part. I'm telling you all this because it's confusing. What is, what is county and what is L S and S's obligation? And if it's going to be the county's stance that L S and S needs to take care of this, this bill, for example, that's before us for some plumbing services, then we need to maybe ask the next commission to reconsider how the funding is, is transmitted over. Because right now, the check goes to L from the county to L S and S. And they're not, there's no, the Board of Directors, which are established by state law, have no money to, at the local level, to take care of, of plumbing issues. So there's where we are. This, to me, is, is a subject that needs a little discussion and perhaps a new contract and figure out who's going to pay for what.
From my viewpoint, Commissioner Jones, we receive, yeah, I'm timely also, forty-six thousand eight hundred bucks payable at eleven thousand seven hundred per quarter. Plus, we receive the costs of cleaning estimated to be not more than a hundred dollars a month, although it can be higher.
Cleaning supplies?
Cleaning supplies. If I read this contract correctly. And the presented bills seem incidental and nominal, in my opinion, and we should pay them. Not because the contract requires it, because it's the right thing to do, given the amount of money that L S S I is paying us.
I'm in full agreement, but I offered that motion and it died from lack of a second meeting ago. And so I, I would offer the motion again if it would get a second. But first, I think there's some interest in discussion.
Chairman, my input on this was, you know, the first one on the clogged sinks and stuff, I would say that's just, that would be their, their cleaning and their responsibility. When it comes down to the cast iron piping and those type of things in the wall in this other bill, I would say that's probably our responsibility.
Well, this is pretty similar, this bill is pretty similar to the cast iron pipe in the wall, is it not?
Yeah.
It's, it's pipe.
I think it boils down to.
Of the two invoices that are presented that, that I.
I did ask Pam to go ahead and pay it so the vendor wouldn't, wouldn't be standing in line waiting for their payment. So I think the bill's been paid, but, but there, there are some books that they can't buy.
I think it goes back to structure versus maintenance myself. Building is a different deal than the maintenance of it, I think. But this is a can of worms. You got this, then you got the senior center. You're going to be better get consistent with.
Well, we got the Historical Society, you could just go on and on.
Well, maybe the, the contract needs updating.
Yes.
All three.
And realistically, we have the one contract that, that's for the maintenance provision with L S S I. It's my understanding that the county is not a party to the contract between the library itself and L S S I. So that's not something that we're a party to or that I have a copy of to even be able to see what it is that the provisions are within that particular contract.
The only, you're correct, Kara. The, the library board is established per statute to have control over the, the library.
Your, your one question or suggestion, suggestion earlier was to pay it rather than the county paying it to L S S I, paying it over to the library with those funds. So, but I don't know how it's set up within your contract, how that's supposed to happen, or how it's set up within, I guess, our agreement for those funding to the library. So probably figuring out how that happens will be within those contract renegotiations, as you're referring to.
Pam, maybe you can answer that question.
So the contract that the library has with L S and S does state that they're, do not pay for building maintenance or replacement capital improvement plans. So I don't know if that answers your question or if you, is there more to that?
I think part of the comments were that, from Commissioner Jones, were that instead of the county paying directly to L S and S for that contract, that we need to pay it to the library so the library then has control, if I understood you correctly. So the library then has control over what needs to happen with those funds.
Library Board has a set of officers by statute, including a treasurer. So there's a, be an avenue for them to accept the funds, but they are all a volunteer, they're for a one meeting a month group and, and not, they're managing, and that's why they hired L S and S.
If I'm not mistaken, that's a tax appropriation and that check goes to the Fannie County Public Library?
Yes.
L S S I just manages and operates the library, but the check does go to the Fannie County Public Library?
Okay, Commissioner Pishna, your thoughts on this?
Well, you read my mind, Mr. Chairman. I do have some thoughts. But first of all, it's interesting to me to observe how much time we're spending on a six hundred dollar bill when it took us just a few seconds for a fifty thousand dollar allocation a little bit ago. But that being set aside here for a minute, certainly, I, I think we need to make it right to the library board with regard to six hundred dollars. But I think the bigger question, and we've talked about this at many meetings during my time on this board, is the clarification with each of these buildings that Dave Jones has referenced earlier in his comments and what the specific duties are and what the respective responsibilities are, not just the library, but Senior Center and Historical Society. And I, I think we've, we've talked about that. I don't know where we are because of other projects being in the forefront and especially budgeting and that kind of thing. I don't, I'm not trying to throw the staff under the bus because we've had so many things going on. But to me, the bigger question and the crux of the discussion here this morning is whose responsible is it for each of these buildings to do what? And then I don't think these discussions for six hundred dollars come into the boardroom once that's outlined and, and firm, and formalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, your thoughts?
I already expressed my feelings on it, so.
All right. Commissioner David Jones, your motion is to appropriate and pay both bills from the general fund, is that correct?
That was correct.
Is there a specific budget item, Mr. Administrator, for library expenses in the budget?
Just for the allocation, which is budgeted for separately. So we'll pull from the general fund either unclassified or rob from building the grounds.
I'm not aware of a legal responsibility to pay these bills, but I think we've exhausted the amount of time reasonable to their expense. And I want to be supportive of the library. The motion before the board by Commissioner Davy Jones is to pay both bills to the library board and reimburse.
The library.
To the library. The sum of nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents and six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Did I understand your motion correctly?
That's correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appropriate the monies from the unspecified general fund or from building at the discretion of the administrator for the appropriations as stated in the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to help for one comment.
Yes, sir.
This nine hundred dollars and six hundred dollars is not going to wreck the library. They've got a few funds that they get for memorials, for example, or the book sales. So they have a few dollars in a kind of a petty cash reserve that they can, they can pay it. But my, my issue is more of what is right and, and trying to understand right now what is right is difficult. I'm just going to strongly suggest that sometime in the near future, that the county commission or the administration or both come together and draft some new, new policy, if you will, new contract for, for these, not only the library, but for the Senior Center and the Historical Society and so on.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I also note, prior to the time that we vote on this, is that this is your assigned, one of your assigned boards and has been for a long time, and we appreciate your insight.
And I've reached term limits, so I'm about to sit down.
Well, there'll be a new person helping the library from this board and will be assigned in January. Are there any further comments on the pending motion as seconded? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
The check's in the mail.
Next up on our business agenda is to hear from Kelly Munyon, the Director of Human Resources, with regard to the Compass Behavioral Health Service Agreement. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelly Munyon, Fannie County Human Resources. The board is being asked to review, provide final approval and authorize the board chair to sign the contract for clinical services from Compass Behavioral Health. On August fifth, twenty twenty-four, the board approved moving our employee assistance program to Compass Behavioral Health effective January one, twenty twenty-five, and authorized Human Resources to work with Compass on a contract for services. Lisa Southern with Compass provided a contract for clinical services that was then reviewed by county councillor and after a few minor changes were, was counterapproved by Fannie County and Compass to present to the board today. The options before you are to authorize the board chair to sign the Compass Behavioral Health Contract for Clinical Services with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty-five, or after review of the contract for clinical services with Compass Behavioral Health, direct staff to consider additional recommendations or changes to the contract. And staff's recommendation is option one, authorizing the board chair to sign the contract.
Okay, I'm going to let everybody know that I sit on Compass's board as the assigned member. And so I would ask if the, that this board is going to approve this contract that you authorize the vice chairman to sign. Questions for Kelly on this contract or for the county councillor?
Mr. Point of interest, you know, it's two dollars per employee per month. Is that, do the employee numbers based at the beginning of the month, based at the end of the month?
We'll provide a census at the beginning of every month.
Haven't heard that. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this behavioral contract with Compass as presented.
And authorize the vice chairman to sign?
That is correct.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Compass as presented, authorizing the vice chairman to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain me. Kelly, don't go very far. Next up on our agenda is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas Secure Hospital and Cancer Plans.
Yes, sir. So this morning, the board's being asked to consider conversion of our Blue Cross Blue Shield Secure Hospital Indemnity Plan and Secure Three Hundred Cancer Plan from individual product offerings to group hospital and cancer plans. Fannie County has for years offered the hospital indemnity and cancer plans as individual product plans through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas and currently have twenty-two enrolled in hospital indemnity and seventeen enrolled in the cancer plan. The individual product hospital indemnity currently has a one-year waiting pre-existing condition exclusion in it. The group plan for hospital indemnity will not have any exclusion for waiting pre-existing conditions. Currently, the individual product cancer plan will not approve coverage with a prior cancer diagnosis. The cancer group plan will have an, will not have an exclusion, excuse me, for prior cancer diagnosis. Monthly premiums for employees will decrease or increase based off tier of coverage elected. These premium changes moving from individual to product, individual product plans to group plans are very minimal and are provided in the attachment. Administration of these group health plans will also align more with our current practice of the medical and dental enrollments, and it will be a more streamlined process for human resource staff. The options before you today are to authorize a conversion from the Secure Hospital Indemnity Plan and Secure Cancer Plans from individual product plans to group plans, which removes current exclusions, or deny the conversion of the Hospital Indemnity and Cancer Plan to group plans requiring the current individual product plans to remain in place with current exclusions. Staff recommends option one, authorizing the conversion of both plans to group plans. There's no fiscal impact to Fannie County. Both of these plans are employee-paid only. There's no employer share.
Kelly, I'm confident that you did your homework. My specific question is, is that was this run by each department head and elected official?
We talked about it at the director's meeting a week ago, I believe. Yes, sir.
And the consensus was to proceed.
They were okay with it, yes, sir. The questions they had were can these policies be taken with them when employees leave? And just like AFLAC, they can. I did find that information and I replied back to all directors in an email with the questions they had.
Well, if the recommendation of the people that are, the directors and elected officials to do this, why shouldn't we? That's my question. Do you have any response to that?
No.
Other questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just a, a part B to what you just said, though. And, and, because I was going to ask if they're portable.
Yes, sir.
Can be taken with them.
Yes.
But they can be taken with them at the same premium?
They can, and the only thing they have to have is minimal essential coverage elsewhere. They can also, we do have one employee currently who, her kids are on her husband's plan elsewhere. She's on a, her single plan here, and she currently has the kids enrolled on the cancer plan. That will also be allowed moving to group. So those were the questions asked by department heads, and, and I did find those out.
Just to further clarify, so, because individual plans can be portable and taken with them at the same premium, and they may have adjustments to that premium later if they do it as a block of, of cancer plans or indemnity plans. So that same thing applies when they go into a group plan here?
Adrian replied, yes, they will be given the chance to continue coverage, have it drafted out of their bank account.
But.
Have to have the minimal essential. He doesn't specify that, and that's what we had talked about, so.
That's the only thing I would be concerned about is whether or not they can continue at the same premium versus Oprah's health insurance plan.
Right, yeah, he didn't give me any other numbers that they would move to, just that it would move to a bank draft.
If I may follow up, the basic provision is, is that they have to have a approved provider plan, then they can take this.
Correct.
Right with them. The question is at what price, and that's going to be negotiated between individuals who are signing up for the plan. So.
Correct.
That, the employees need to get that spelled out if they're looking to try to move this.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Chairman, and just, they need to, it's the over-communication thing. They need to know what that premium might be, if it's going to be different or not, before they do make a move, so.
Correct.
Well, I want to keep all of our employees.
Right, no, I know, I know, and that may be a way to keep them.
All right.
Education will happen to the staff through open enrollment.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this issue of the change in plan as recommended by departments and elected officials? Is there a motion to improve this change in the certain benefits from individual to group plans?
So moved, Mr. Chairman? Second.
Been moved and seconded that the proposed action by staff recommending option one, authorizing the conversion from Secure Hospital Indemnity Plan and Secure Three Hundred Cancer Plan from individual product plans to group plans, which removes current exclusions. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down our business agenda, we have Sewer District Number One, Delinquent Accounts. And Leah, I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot at this. Quinones?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, if it was a good German name, I'd be easy with it. But I, I point out to all of my good friends in this community who have Hispanic origin, names that my name ends in Z also.
Correct.
Thank you. Would you proceed?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Leah Quinones. I'm with Fannie County Public Works. I am going to present the Sewer District Number One.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes. Sewer District Number One, Delinquent Accounts for twenty twenty-four. Before I proceed, I would like to mention that one of the attachments had the incorrect amounts. If you could put your focus on the Exhibit A, that has the correct amounts. In preparation, I had August numbers in one of the attachments, in this Sewer District One attachment. But Exhibit A does have the correct amount. First September. Today, we would like for the Board of County Commissioners to consider and certify to the clerk, county clerk, the accounts from Sewer District Number One as delinquent and request them to be placed on the tax rule. The Public Works Department annually reviews delinquent accounts for Sewer District Number One. Attached is a list of the delinquent accounts for twenty twenty-four pursuant to KSA nineteen dash twenty-seven A O nine. The board may place any special maintenance tax or user charge as a lien upon, upon the property against which the Levi or service charge is made from the date the Levi or sewer service charge becomes due. County staffs, oh, sorry, to, the alternatives are to adopt Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, certifying to the county clerk that the attached in Exhibit A are delinquent and authorize the current balance to be placed on a tax rule for collection. Option number two, do not adopt the Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-four and direct staff to continue current collection attempts. Staff recommends alternative one, to adopt Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, certifying the county clerk that the attached in Exhibit A are delinquent and authorize the current balance to be placed on a tax rule for collection.
Okay, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Scrolling through the exhibits, Exhibit A, for instance, for Mr. Adami is six thirty-three eighty. And then when you go to Sewer District One Owner Parcel List, Delinquent, it has five fifty-two sixty-five.
Yes, so the five hundred and fifty-two sixty-five, that is from August, the balance from August. And then we, the balance is again in September, and the correct amount is six hundred and thirty-three with eighty cents. Monthly, double check. For Brian Jesus Adame, his monthly charge for three accounts is eighty-one dollars with fifteen cents.
So I want to make sure that we are clear that we are authorizing the assessment to the tax rules on Exhibit A.
Yes, sir. Correct.
SD Number One Owner Parcel List that was in our packet.
That is correct.
Very good, and I'm, I'm clear. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, including Exhibit A.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution as stated in our packet and as reflected on Exhibit A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? We'll sign the resolution.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue right on with Sewer District Number Two and on our agenda, Dora, you have this one.
Yes, sir, good morning. The clerk's office annually reviews our accounts for Sewer District Number Two. And what we're. what we're billing for Sewer District Number Two is a repayment of a, an addition that was made to that district, so they're all paying that back over a number of years. So it's a small percentage of Sewer District Two that we actually bill every month. Pursuant to the KSA 1927A11, when ordered by the governing body of the district, the County Clerk shall place upon the tax rule for collection, subject to the same penalties, and collect it in the same manner as other taxes. We do have one account that has been consistently unpaid for the last couple of years, and so we ask that you authorize this to go on to the tax rule again. The amount currently due is 46596. Your options today are to authorize the Chair to sign an order to the County Clerk to place the delinquent accounts for Sewer District Number Two on the 2024 tax rule as a special assessment, or decline to authorize the Chair to sign that and direct staff to attempt to collect the funds otherwise. We do recommend that you authorize that this go on to the tax rule for 2024 as a special assessment.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we put this on the tax rule as a special assessment.
Authorize, Ms. Chairman, just.
Second. Thank you. The motion is, is that Fannie County Sewer District Number Two requests for placement of an account on the tax rule in the current balance of 46596 and authorize the Chairman to sign.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll sign. Don't go very far. You're up still, unless you're having somebody else help us with this cereal malt beverage.
No, it'll actually be me. Me, I wasn't able to be here this morning, so.
Okay, so go, please.
So Milk and Honey has applied for 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage License, and they have met all necessary licensing requirements. The application-related materials were sent to the Board late last week, and they have been provided this morning for your review. All CMB license applications are handled by the City or County Clerk where the business or establishment is located, and this license would allow the person to sell or offer for sale any CMB or cereal malt beverage and beer containing not more than 6% alcohol by volume. All CMB license applications must be on forms prepared by the Kansas Attorney General, which is what you have in your packet, and those are submitted to either the city or county in which the establishment is located. We then bring that to you for approval, and upon approval, the City Clerk issues that license. So today, we're asking that you authorize the issuance of the 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage licenses to Milk and Honey. Your second alternative would be to decline to authorize the issuance of that and direct staff what additional information you may need. We recommend Alternative One, to authorize the issuance of the 2024 CMB license to Milk and Honey. I will note that Milk and Honey will be the new restaurant at the Garden City Regional Airport.
Questions for the Court?
And Ms. Chairman, before I make a motion, and it's with known businesspeople from Garden City, so I would move that we authorize the issuance of 2024 Cereal Malt Beverage License to Milk and Honey.
Second.
Moved and seconded to issue a cereal malt beverage license to Milk and Honey for authorized place at the Garden City Regional Airport as indicated on the application. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll sign.
Thank you.
with the item that was added to the agenda today. Robert Reese, our Administrator, will give us an update on the heating, air conditioning unit in this building and three other county buildings. You have the floor, sir.
Right, thank you. Over the past few weeks, we've been in discussion with Integrated Consulting Engineer, Inc. They are a engineering firm that works specifically on these types of heating and air systems that we have, the VRF systems. We've had numerous phone calls with them, met with them twice in person, the latest was just last week while they were in town on another project. They are currently in the process of designing and bidding a project for the school district. In our discussion with them, over the past few weeks, we've described the issues that we're having on the system and have had apparently since completion. With that said, a couple of weeks ago, we've asked them to provide a, an agreement for their services, in essence, to assess this facility and the other three facilities that are on this type of system, to try and provide a little bit more reliability, consistency, and operational efficiency in the system. That is something that, that you do have the agreement in front of you there with a not-to-exceed amount of approximately 34.5, but there are some, be some travel expenses and so on and so forth. The, they anticipated that this will probably take 60 to 90 days to do a complete assessment. We have preliminarily provided them with the, what we have is as-built for the buildings if, if we choose to move forward on assessment. Following that assessment, they will give us a anticipated solution, if you will, for the system in each one of the buildings, and their recommendation on the best way to move forward. Reason why this was put on at last minute was, was that the timing of it, that we received all the information was such that it ended up being last minute. We, the staff, would like to try and get moving on this to try and bring some resolve to it, to this issue. That concludes my briefing on it, subject to your questions. What questions do you have for me?
Well, I think the issue's pretty clear. ICE has local engineers here, they're also a local firm. They may be headquartered somewhere else, but they do have engineer here, I think Mr. Bogner, if I remember correctly.
They do have one representative here, yes, that's correct, yeah.
And so we'll be able to work with you and, and the other heads of those other buildings that have this system, and we need to get to the bottom of it. The authorized appropriation is in what amount? Would you help me out?
The authorized appropriation would be 34.5 plus any expense, yeah.
Okay, and the source of funds for this?
This one here, we can pull out of the Buildings and Grounds Fund, or we may take a look at, we do have a capital reserve for facilities, so we'll do either one of those based upon balances.
Okay. Do you want that flexibility, or do you want it out of one specific fund?
I just soon have, I just soon have the flexibility, so I can look at what those balances are as we are earning, as we are entering into the fourth quarter of the year.
All right, very good. Other questions for the Administrator?
Quick question, Robert. How long of this, has this firm been in business? Do you know?
Oh, I, no, sir, I do not know exactly how long in business they are out of Wichita, though.
Seems like part of our problem started with a firm that we dealt with that was kind of new and innovative and state-of-the-art and...
They've, they've, they have been in, in operation for.
For a while.
For quite a while, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe they did have prior experience assessing VRF systems in this area, similar to ours.
Yes, and through Kansas and Colorado.
Well, they'd be busy picking up the slack from that first outfit. It appears that the system was ill-designed, so I guess we don't have much choice. All the other buildings have the same issues, or is it better?
Yes, but not quite to this extent as this building.
This is a hopeful question. Do they hope that they can fix our system, or are we talking replacement?
We'll have to stay tuned after that, the assessment, okay?
All right. Well, I think what the Administrator needs is authorization for appropriation of funds for assistance by ICE on the four buildings and four VRF systems, the amount of $34,500 plus incidentals, either from Public Works or from capital improvement.
It's, it's actually from Buildings and Grounds and the Buildings Capital Improvement Fund.
Buildings CIP.
Mr. Chairman?
And asking for the Administrator's signature?
Action to sign the agreement.
That's what I mean, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
I would offer the motion to, to allow the County Administrator to enter into this agreement and pick the funding source that best fits the scenario.
And I would add, subject to the Counselors, County Counselors' review of the agreement, and I would second.
Is that all right with you, Commissioner Jones, on your motion? All right, and to be clear on the motion, it's either from the Buildings or the Buildings Capital Improvement Fund, correct? Two sources and $34,500 plus incidentals. Is that your motion? Is that your second?
My motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
We get to going on what we can do to make this system work, because it's going to be very long before it's going to be cold. I do not want another 47-degree meeting. I don't even have to work here every day.
Difference of opinion.
But that day was not good. All right, we'll move straight into Department Monthly Reports. Those are presented. Robert, Mr. Administrator, do you have anything you want to add to the reports as filed? I note that on our agenda EMS wishes to have...
Nothing, nothing to the submitted monthly reports from the Department. I do have a brief update from EMS as well as the request.
We'll hear from Skylar, then. Please introduce yourself to the public, sir.
Good morning, I'm Skylar Soares, Director of Fannie County EMS. The request that I have is that, I'm sure those of you who have driven by the joint fire in EMS station have seen the tremendous amount of progress that we've made here in the last several months. My request is to offer you guys an opportunity to kind of get a small tour of the place, that we can go onsite, you guys can continue to look through and have both Chief Ursick and myself do a brief tour, 15 minutes, maybe 30 minutes of going through there, and so you guys can see the progress that we've made, especially internal, rather than just driving by. So I'm looking for a time that would be good for you guys, this week or next week, to come by, brief, you know, real brief tour of the facility.
I, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I appreciate the opportunity. Madam Clerk, if all three of us are there, do we have to publish the date and time?
Technically, yes.
All right, and is there a length of time that we have to publish before that we do the tour?
It just says in a reasonable...
All right, reasonable's going to be determined by the Chair to be this public notice and be published on our website, then. When do you want to do the tour, gentlemen?
About after the meeting today.
Is that reasonable?
We do have the work session coming up here.
That's correct, and do you still have to orchestrate something with us?
I think I'd have to orchestrate, it's, it's probably fairly simple, because it's, but I just got to let them know. I doubt there would be a problem doing it this afternoon.
I'd have a conflict this afternoon, boss.
Well, that's about the only time I can do it, is this whole day.
That way, we don't have to publish. You go today and the rest of it.
I'll just drive by.
I can, it's, if you want, if you want to just get with me personally, I can, I can do a brief one.
One of the things to solve this is, is that Commissioner Dreese and Commissioner Pishney have been working on the LEC in your EMS health building.
Mm-hmm.
And see that progress that is there. Commissioner Jones, do you wish to attend today?
I'll drive by, catch him. I've got also something going on this afternoon, so.
All right, well, that would leave Commissioner Pishney, Commissioner Dreese, wouldn't have to have a meeting. Would you guys be willing, you're out this afternoon?
Well, and I think, I think in fairness to Crossland and Skylar, we need to give them at least a couple of days' notice and so forth.
All right.
So they can make sure it's okay with the contractor, but...
How about after the October 7th?
That, that was where I was going to go. Somebody beat me to the punch. I'm suggesting that we look at it as an extension of our October 7th meeting, three weeks from now.
Would that be agreeable?
That would be fine, yeah.
If you're going to do it, I'd probably suggest the afternoon as well, because we do have that 140-years reception after.
Yeah, but it could be extension of that meeting, and there wouldn't have to be a separate public notice and all that, so.
All right, well, if it's all right with you, Skylar, we'd like to set the time for an extension of our celebration of 140 years on October 7th. That celebration is here at 11:00 a.m., and after that, we'll adjourn and, and meet out there and take the tour, if you'd get that arranged for us.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
All right, anybody else that you want to attend, other than ourselves and the Administrator?
Oh, if Department Heads wish to go too, as well, that would be fine with me.
Right, wonderful for everybody to get to see this new facility.
It is an active construction site, so we all have to wear hard hats, but we've got plenty of plenty. Crossland has many extras that we can use, so.
Right.
We just need to make sure that we're all wearing hard hats when we're walking through there.
We'll, we'll do that on the 7th.
All right, thank you very much.
Anything else for the Commission this morning, Skylar?
No. Thank you.
I think I've got half left from the groundbreaking ceremony. I can drag it along.
If Jan didn't throw mine away, I have one also.
Hard hat?
Yeah.
I'm surprised you need one.
I don't need one.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, with all this elevation in, in public service.
I need one, I need one.
You need sunscreen.
Oh, my goodness.
I can on you there, Duane.
Turn the mics off now.
No. Looking forward to the tour, Human Resources Fourth Annual In-Service and Benefits Fair. Kelly?
So the staff would like to remind and invite the Board to our Fourth Annual All-Staff In-Service and Benefits Fair that's taking place on Columbus Day, Monday, October 14th, at the Fairgrounds Exhibition Building. In previous, previous years, Commissioner Dave Jones and Commissioner Bob Kreitzer have gave the welcome, led the pledge, and conducted the invocation for us. Staff would appreciate if at least one of the Board members would be willing to do this again this year. Keynote speaker this year is actor and magician Josh Lozoff. Josh has been performing and speaking around the world for nearly 20 years. He's the only American magician invited to the World's Fair, and he was recently featured on the TV show Penn and Teller Fool Us. If he looks familiar to you, it might be from his years starring in Cheer. Um, and he was recently featured on the TV show Penn and Teller Fool Us. Um, if he looks familiar to you, um, it might be from his years, um, starring in Cheers and on Clueless. Um, in addition to Josh this year, we have Mary Lou Goodyear from KU School of Public Management, Chad Grieve from Iron Insurance Risk Management Team, Jordan Takemeyer from IMA, and Marilyn Douglas from Grow Well Clinic. And then I do have a list of benefit vendors that will be in attendance to have one-on-one with employees. Um, making special note that we've never had Capers and KPNF onsite for this, and this year they will be here. We're just under a year into KPNF. There's lots of questions, um, and so I was excited to be able to have a team from Capers, um, to come out that day. So if possible, we would like at least one commissioner in attendance for the welcoming, um, to lead the pledge and to give the invocation.
Well, uh, if anybody wants to do that, fine. If not, uh, I would be available. And what time on the fourteenth?
Seven o'clock is breakfast.
So seven-thirty, we'll start serving breakfast. Um, we'll start the welcome about eight fifteen.
So breakfast at seven-thirty. Kelly, you get the chairman unless somebody pipes up to want to do that. Uh, any other commissioner, one other commissioner like to attend?
I, I'm going to try to be there and, and if something happens to Jerry's schedule, I can be the backup.
Okay, thank you.
Be prepared to do the invocation, sir.
I can, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. And our location is the...
The Finney County Fairgrounds Exhibition Building.
I can't call it another name. I'll get spilted.
That's...
It's the big one.
At least I knew where I was going.
I would add that you're all welcome to stop by throughout the day. Lunch will be served.
Lunch, mhm. Snacks.
All right, well, it'd be a great opportunity for me to get to meet some more of the folks and also the vendors. Commissioner Pishney, I appreciate, uh, your assistance and backup.
And you will, you will be sending out more reminders?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll get you some agendas and things out in your email, so you've got all the information. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we got it. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next, Mackenzie on a development update. Please announce for the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I have a few updates for you this morning. Um, first, we did last week a follow-up walk-through of Randall Estates. Um, many of the concerns that we had were addressed. There's just a few things left before we can go ahead and install the signs. And then once the signs are installed, we can, we'll have it before you to accept the infrastructure. So, um, moving on to Country Acres, um, we did do a quick preliminary inspection of Country Acres last week as well to, um, take a look at where the, the infrastructure's at currently. Um, we're gonna be putting together a report similar to what we did to Randall Estates so that they can address some issues as well before that infrastructure can be accepted. And then, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had an internal site review, um, that we, it was two different meetings for that. Uh, I can't go into the details about those projects, but one was a commercial project and one was a residential project. Um, so we're excited that we're, we're getting new projects coming in. And that's it. Any questions for me?
Quick question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm not mistaken, that you and the administrator have been looking for an assistant, uh, planner or something in that department. Uh, I think I saw it on KAC's, uh, website or newsletter or something. Are we having any success with that, uh, position?
So, uh, we have been advertising for a planner position, um, to help out with the planning and zoning responsibilities. Uh, we did have a couple applicants. Um, one of them, we did extend an offer to and, um, they ended up getting a, a better offer somewhere else, so, and they declined and then, um, we're still, um, on the, the hunt for, for somebody right now. So we've, we've published on KAC, we've published on the American Planning Association's website as well as, um, Planetizen, which is another, uh, website that planners usually, uh, look at for jobs and, and new updates in the planning world, so... Um, we're, we're actively trying. I also reached out the first time we, we put it out to many of the universities, um, within the area to see if anybody was interested.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mackenzie? Sir?
Mackenzie, are you having trouble getting inspections when, when they're called for out in the county?
Uh, like the inspections of the infrastructure that we do or the inspections?
Building inspections as building is going up. The reason I'm asking, I'll give you the background. Contacted by an electrician that, that was concerned about the lack of inspections particularly in Chapel Heights, which I realize is not a county project. But he said there, somebody is signing off, uh, for occupancy and then all of a sudden realizing that there were things wired, the electrical wiring was not accued, and so they're, have to go back and, and make some changes. And he's wanting to know what we were prepared to do about it, so I pointed out that Chapel Heights is a, is a, a different entity, but we are discussing neighborhood development and so on as we, as we go along, and I was just curious how, how that's working for you out in the county.
Yeah, um, building inspections are solely housed in the Neighborhood and Development Services Department. Um, we don't have, uh, much involvement with it. They send out some re, building reports every so often, but I haven't heard of any, um, concerns related to building inspections within the county right now, so... But yeah, if, if you have any questions about that, Trent would be the, Trent Maxwell would be the best person to talk to about it.
Any other questions for Mackenzie? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Turning to Robert Reese, our administrator, sir?
All right, just a few, um, brief updates on, uh, a few of the projects going on. One of them being the, um, elevator project over at the courthouse. We're trying to push to get that completed, uh, waiting on some final inspection and some, a few changes, uh, to the, um, uh, fire system for that. So, uh, we're down to a scheduling, trying to, uh, bring in the, um, uh, one, the, um, uh, fire alarm system folks from Wichita and then bringing back inspection from, uh, Kansas City and, and with the state of Kansas. So we're orchestrating that. Uh, EMS Health Department, I'm sorry.
Can I interrupt you there at the courthouse, uh, for those of us who are tired of alternate places of doing court work? Is there a timeline that we might anticipate that building opening back up?
Well, what, some of the dates they're looking at is, uh, in the, uh, first half of October.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
EMS Health Department, I believe we've got a, uh, meeting set for October eighth. Trying to refine some of that, um, mid-design features. Um, and as, um, Latin Construction conveyed earlier this morning is that they should have a, an updated, um, budget projection for that project. Um, LEC, we're, uh, working on setting up a time and date, uh, for the, um, programming part of that project with, uh, Sean Harding. So, um, I think, think we're trying to, uh, work on a date for later on this month so we can make that happen. Uh, he's not gotten back to me yet with a date and time that we can do the kickoff and then they'll meet with the individual, um, departments and divisions on, uh, for the pro, programming aspect of it. So once we get that, we'll, uh, forward that to both the county representatives and keep everybody apprised of trying to keep that going.
The October eighth, that's at ten-thirty? Is that when that starts?
That's correct, yeah.
That's a no?
Does that change? Oh, we have some departmental at, at...
Yeah, there's two separate, um, they'll do the EMS and then the Health Department separately, so it begins at nine o'clock. One of them's at nine and then the other one will be at ten-thirty, so...
Oh, okay, thank you.
And just FYI, I will not be able to attend that, uh, October eighth meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, would you like somebody else to attend in your stead?
Well, the way I read the MO is it's gonna be just going through all the details and so forth. I think staff's better equipped to do that anyhow, so... It's up to, it's up to Duane if he wants to...
I will try to attend, but he is correct, that's a staff...
Okay.
Important point.
All right.
If you need any help, I'll appoint somebody else for that meeting, but I don't think it's necessary to you, so, all right.
I have nothing else at this point.
All right, county counselor?
Before you go?
Oh, excuse me, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you mentioned Sean's, uh, name, I think we approved, uh, a temporary fix, uh, to some floor coating or something, uh, at LEC, uh, last time we met. Uh, is that in progress or what was the status of that?
We'll meet with him at that kickoff meeting to try and get that set up. And what it was is that, uh, you, uh, you allowed me to, since it was, we're entering into an agreement so he could write the specs to go out to bids for that.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't understand the process, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, county counselor?
Um, this week I just need to work on getting the updated current numbers from the county treasurer, uh, as far as the tax sale goes, um, as to what the numbers are as they stand at the time of filing, um, for the county tax sale. And then, um, should be ready to go barring any other matters that pop up in the meantime, um, on getting this matter filed, so, um, tax sale. We'll be moving forward for that. The, uh, we do have on our agenda for today, um, an executive session regarding attorney-client matters. So we'll need to talk about that today as well.
And who do you want in your executive session and how long?
We'll need approximately twenty minutes and the administrator and the adminis, assistant administrator as well as myself.
All right, anything else for, on your report?
Uh, no.
All right, let's go ahead and do the, uh, board governance, uh, before we do the executive session.
Yeah, nothing's, nothing specific that was added that I need to point out.
Any chance we could get the showcases from Bob or Joe Coles and get them on our...
I'll try and I'll add those to the, uh, yeah, to the upcoming community events, yes.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. We'll go, uh, left to right today. Uh, Commissioner Davy Jones on the commissioner's report.
Nothing to report other than last Wednesday, our chairman of the county commission did the program for the Rotary, did an outstanding job, and I appreciate it. That's, as I was, the, uh, library board meeting is gonna be next Monday night. They shuffle things around so that a higher-up, if you will, from LSNS can attend. So anybody at five o'clock wanna see a library board meeting, you're welcome to attend.
Very good. Commissioner Dries?
Regular Great Plains, uh, monthly meeting, nothing exciting particularly, just regular meeting. I did unfortunately miss, uh, last Wednesday's fair board meeting. I was out of town, did not get back in time, but other than that, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Pishney?
Continue to, uh, attend the extension, uh, district board meetings and they had one in Garden City, uh, recently. And then, uh, next month is in Scott City. They alternate between the two counties. Uh, nothing else, uh, uh, ershatter importance, but, uh, a number of meetings going on. But the other thing, uh, from a board, board governance standpoint, it's, uh, preparation for legislative policies and I continue to get notices from different groups, so, uh, I know we, in our policy, talk about, um, supporting the Chamber of Commerce and KAC and NACO and some of these other things, so just a, uh, FYI to keep your eyes and ears open to, uh, particular things that are going on with those groups. I know KAC is in the middle of their two policy meetings, uh, and I haven't seen a report. Have you, Robert, seen a report of that first policy meeting?
No, I have not yet.
And, uh, so we need to pay attention to that as well as, uh, others. Uh, Chamber will be working on theirs, uh, here this fall and stuff too.
Speaking of that, there isn't there a meeting in Liberal October third?
The, uh, KLPG, which I think, uh, Larry and Du, Duane are signed up to go to, uh, I will not be able to attend that, but... Yes, the KLPG, uh, meet, meeting, which includes the legislative policy, yes.
Well, that's a wonderful event to have it in Liberal rather than in a western Kansas location like Hutchinson or Salina.
Or Salina. They do a nice job in Liberal of hosting those.
Well, we've been cordially invited and Dory sent us out an additional reminder of that meeting on the third. I cannot attend, so really thankful that Vice Chairman Jones and, and Commissioner Dries can attend. Commissioner Jones?
I have nothing to report.
And my report is, is that, uh, we continue to have, uh, substantial economic growth in our community. The work that was done today in regard to Compass is important for all of our employees. Uh, it's also indicative of the decision of the Board of Compass, uh, to which I am assigned. They have over, uh, three hundred employees. It's a, an incredible change for southwest Kansas and the coverage and the excitement, uh, relative to that organization. And also, well, just last week, we did, uh, or last session, excuse me, we received a report from Justice Planners, which had economic data on it, and again, today, we received from Economic Development, economic data showing a strong and vibrant community, and it was wonderful. Uh, I'll give credit where credit's due. Uh, Ms. Schartz, uh, drafted the resolution celebrating one-hundred-and-forty years. It was artfully done and a privilege to proclaim and announce it to our citizenry. That is my report. Uh, we have an executive session. Uh, we need a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege for twenty minutes with the administrator and an assistant administrator and a county counselor present.
Would you add four or five minutes to that so we can make a...
Correct. We, we will not, um, convene until, we will, we'll be back here at eleven fifteen, so twenty-three minutes.
I'll offer the motion to go into executive session after a four-minute break for twenty minutes and with the commission, the county administrator and the assistant administrator joining the county council.
Second?
Moved and seconded to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege for the time as stated in the motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session, see at eleven fifteen.